I'd like to welcome everybody and call the June 4th Michigan City Council meeting to order, please close or not close off, but silence all computer devices and cellphones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nylov, take the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Ms. Carnes.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Hamilton.
Present.
Mr. Przewlinski.
Present.
Ms. Silvers.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stemley. We have nine present and no one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Nylov, and all council members have received a copy of the minutes from the May 21st meeting. Are there any corrections? Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Fitzpatrick and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reports of standing committees, Mr. Dabney.
All right. The June 4th Council Finance Committee meeting is called to order at 6:05 PM by Chairman Dabney to review the claims filed since our last meeting. Committee members Beatry and Przewlinski were present as well as council members Simmons, Fitzpatrick, and Carnes, and also Attorney Meyer. City Controller Rich Murphy was unable to attend. Claims reviewed totaled $144,536.34 from the Riverboat Fund and $402.02 from the Boyd Development Fund and an Energy Savings Group, ESG, Energy Savings Project payment of $760,963.62 for a total claim docket of $905,872.98. There were no other issues to discuss, and Councilman Przewlinski moved to recommend approval of the docket with a second by Councilman Beatry, and that motion was approved unanimously. Upon a motion by Councilman Beatry and a second by Councilman Przewlinski, the meeting was adjourned at 6:07 PM. The summary of the claims are as follows. From the Riverboat Fund, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, $1,843.57, King Outdoor Solutions, $75,038.60, RL Roofing Service, Inc., $18,100 even, Reprograstic Arts, $1,330 even, U.S. Uniform and Supply, $3,197.50, WatchGuard, $5,045 even, Woodruff &amp; Sons, Inc., $39,981.67 for a total from the Riverboat of a total of $144,536.34. From the Boyd Development Fund, we had a payment to George Prowitz of $402.02 for a total of single amount. Then the Energy Savings Group payment was once again for $760,936.62, once again for a total docket of $905,872.98, and that concludes the finance report.
Thank you, Councilmen. Also, the Labor Relations Committee had a meeting on May 28th with the Police Department, and all council members received a copy of the minutes. Purpose of the joint workshop was to review and discuss the following proposed ordinance, which is amending Section 70-102 subsection B, Article 4, and Chapter 70 of the Michigan City Municipal Code, commonly known as Promotions to Rank Within the Michigan City Police Department. Council President Przewlinski called the meeting to order at 5:00 PM, and it had adjourned at 6:05. Those in attendance were council members Beatry, Hamilton, Council Attorney Jim Myers, and City Attorney Amber Lepage-Stahlbrink. Others in attendance were Michigan City Police Department Chief Swistec, Michigan City Police Department Assistant Chief Urbansik, Police Officer Raymond, FOP President Samuelson, FOP Secretary Havlin, FOP of Indiana Representative Immerch, and Police Officer Drake, and Police Officer Richardson, and Fire Chief Novak. Chief Swistec wants to make modifications to rank structuring in the Police Department. He's proposing to eliminate the ranks of corporal and lieutenant. The reasons are because the corporal is the first line of supervision, and presently there are patrol officers making more money than their supervisors at the corporate level. This also seems to be dragging down morale and a lack of officers wanting to be corporals and moving up to management level. Chief Swistec pointed out that in today's policing, the responsibility on corporals and sergeants is greater than ever, and another fact is that master patrolman has the likelihood of making more money annually versus the corporal. Chief Swistec showed an example of how seven patrol officers have made more money than a corporal. Chief Swistec mentioned that eliminating supervisors in the past in order to get raises was the cause of the problem. Corporals and sergeants are basically doing the same work. The FOP supports the proposal, and Chief Swistec said that the proposal will cost the city approximately $43,000 annually. However, to be more specific, so that the city council knows exactly how much this will cost the city, the Labor Relations Committee is having the proposal cost investigated by the city controller to get the true cost, and all council members will receive a copy of that once that's received. And Chief Swistec will also be sending to all council members the proposed organizational chart if this was to be enacted. And these minutes are submitted by Council President Don Przewlinski, and I also believe that we had a Finance Committee meeting, Councilman Dabney, so if you'd like to report on that.
All right. May 29th, 2019, Special Finance Committee meeting to discuss approving the additional appropriation of the budget for the local option income tax LOIC fund to provide funding for the maintenance and repair of streets and sidewalks. A special finance committee meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM by Chairman Dabney to discuss the ordinance itself and also discuss the projects for the 2019 paving season. Committee members Przewlinski and Beatry were present, as well as Councilman Fitzpatrick, Spike Keller, and other members of the public. City Controller Rich Murphy was unable to attend. After discussing the various projects presented by Spike Keller and the eventual start and completion dates, the meeting moved to concentrate, voting on the $1 million amount from the LOIC fund. Councilman Przewlinski moved to recommend approval of the ordinance with a second by Councilman Beatry. The motion was approved unanimously and will be forwarded to the council with a 3-0 favorable recommendation. Upon a motion by Councilman Beatry and a second by Councilman Przewlinski, the meeting was adjourned at 6:22 PM.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any reports of special or select committees?
Um, I had a standing committee.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
On May 28th, the Plan Commission met, and they formed an Alternative Housing Study Committee, and they're requesting city council participation on that committee, and so I would ask Mr. Przewlinski to name two or three people to that committee, and I would request that I be one of them as chairperson of the Planning and Zone Committee.
Okay, Councilwoman, do we want, would you like me to appoint two or three? What is the Planning Commission looking for a specific number or whatever we feel like we'd like to?
Two or, I think, two or three, so myself and if there's other people that want to participate, yeah.
All right. Well, with that being said, I'll go ahead and make appointments right now. Councilwoman Carnes, you can be on it. I'd like to be on it, myself, Councilman Przewlinski, and Councilwoman Silvers, I'd like you to be on there, okay? All right. Okay? All right. We are done with, no reports of special or select committees? I don't believe there are none. Reports of other office, city officers and departments? There are none tonight? Claims docket in the Claims Fund, 2042 Riverboat, claims of $144,536.34, Boyd Development, which is Fund 2031, $402.02, and ESG Savings Project of $760,936.62. All those in favor of passing the claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Claims are passed. Ms. Nylov, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Communications before us this evening?
Uh, petitions, there are no petitions. Communications correspondence received in the Clerk's Office on May 20th, 2019, and May 28th, 2019, from DLZ Weekly Activities Report for ESG Energy Project. Correspondence was also received in the Clerk's Office on May 28th, 2019, from Mr. Tony Childers.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nylov. Are there any resolutions before us this evening?
There are no resolutions.
And our first ordinance before us this evening on second reading by title only, Ms. Nylov, without objection?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation of the budget of the local option income tax LOIC fund to provide funding for the maintenance and repair of streets and sidewalks, and this is introduced by Mr. Beatry.
And does the author have anything that he would like to add at this time?
Just two brief comments, just a reminder, the Finance Committee minutes stated that the Finance Committee voted 3 to nothing in favor of a favorable recommendation on this ordinance to the council tonight, and secondly, if there are no objections after the second reading, I'd like to recommend that we move this to third reading so we can go ahead and get this paving done, don't have to wait two more weeks.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. There will also be a formal public hearing this evening on this ordinance. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the council? Wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the council? Anyone from the council? Okay, there, we will move this on to third reading. Ms. Nylov, if you would please, by title only, without objection, third reading on this ordinance?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation of the budget of the local option income tax LOIC fund to provide funding for maintenance and repair of streets and sidewalks, and this is introduced by Mr. Beatry.
And does the author have anything he'd like to add, as he just did? Okay. Uh, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, are there any council comments? Any council comments?
Wish to approve?
Support.
Okay, I do have one comment, since I was involved with the meeting, and I did discuss this with the mayor personally, is that originally the administration was looking at taking us out of the Riverboat Fund, but I objected to that, and they found that they could take this out of the LOIC tax and use that funding, which can be used on any type of municipal type expenditure, so I'm glad we went in that direction, and as the city council is made aware of streets and sidewalks that have to be repaired in Michigan City, we could probably spend a lot more money than this, so I think it's a good expenditure, and as we look at, you know, work to be done on Franklin Street, we also have to remember that we took over Michigan Boulevard from an estate, I believe that was like, I don't know, eight or nine years ago, whatever the timeframe was, but one of these states, Michigan Boulevard, is going to have to be repaired also, so we're trying to look into the future and be proactive, so. With that being said, there was a motion made by Councilman Hamilton and seconded by Councilman Beatry. Ms. Nylov, on the vote.
Mr. Stemley.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Ms. Carnes.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Przewlinski.
Aye.
Ms. Silvers.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylov. And our first and only reading on third reading this evening, Ms. Nylov, by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation of the budget of the Riverboat Fund to provide funding for One Hot Box for pavement patching for Michigan City Central Services, and this is introduced by Ms. Carnes.
And does the author have anything that she would like to add at this time?
Uh, yes. At our May 21st meeting, Mr. Przewlinski made the suggestion that Central Services did not have the personnel to operate this equipment. I spoke with Director Bob Zonder, he indicated that he does have the required staff, and I think this apparatus would be a wise expenditure since we could use it to extend the usability of some of our streets, and we just appropriated, you know, money for paving, and I think that this falls in line with that same idea. Thank you.
Okay, and there was a formal public hearing was held on May 21st on this ordinance. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, is there a, any council comments?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilman Simmons and seconded by Councilman Hamilton. Are there any further comments by the council? Having none, Ms. Nylov, on the vote.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Ms. Carnes.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Przewlinski.
Aye.
Ms. Silvers.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Mr. Stemley.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylov. All right. Uh, moving on to unfinished business, unfinished business. There are nominations, the common council has two appointments to the Youth Leadership Commission. One appointment is for one year initially, and one appointment is for two years. And is there any nominations this evening?
Yes.
Councilman Dabney?
Um, I'd like to nominate Andre Dockry.
Andre Dockry has been nominated and I second that nomination. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, so we still have one nomination. Pardon? Uh, which, I guess we could, is this for the one year or the two year? Okay, so this here is a two year.
Okay, now, if he's going for two years, because he's currently 22 years of age, and that is the age limit. Does he have a one year?
We have another one-year appointment, so he obviously can be just the one-year appointment also.
Yeah. So nomination goes for the one-year appointment.
Okay. So Andre Dockry has been nominated for the one-year appointment. All right. All right, so nominations are still open for the two-year. It was Nathan Patrick.
Yeah, the last one is.
Because he was for one year, correct?
Yeah, those are direct council appointments. The last one has to come from Marquette High School, so.
I'll reach out to Amanda Poitier, she'd emailed me earlier today actually about wanting to get her students more involved in the council, so this is a perfect opportunity for that.
And I did stop by there a couple weeks back, and I dropped off applications to someone in the secretary office, so this should happen.
Okay, so Nathan Patrick was nominated, and Mr. Dockry has just been nominated for one year, and we're only looking for two appointments. Tonight's nominations.
Nathan already serves, we already appointed him.
Okay. All right, so, okay, so Nathan's on, and Dockry, we can, well, if the council wishes to, we can vote on Dockry this evening and be done with it, with these nominations and voting for this commission. No?
One year two-year appointment, or one year.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused, because we have Nathan Patrick who's already appointed, okay, and he's got the one-year appointment, okay, and then with Dockry, he'll get the one-year appointment. Because it says here, one appointment, the city council has two appointments, all right? Yeah, three appointments. Oh, okay. All right. Okay, so, we can go ahead and vote for Mr. Dockry, if the commission, if the council wishes to do so. Is everyone in favor of voting for Mr. Dockry? Okay. Everyone in support of Mr. Dockry signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Congratulations, Mr. Dockry. Uh, and new business, FYI, the common council has one appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals due to the passing of Mr. Dennis Knott, whose term expired on December 1st, 2020. So at our next council meeting, we'll be taking nominations for the VZA. Comments from the public? Public comment time? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on any subject? Anybody from the council or public wish to speak on any subject?
Not sure if this is the time or not to speak, but, good evening, Honorable President and Council Members of Michigan City. My name is Janet Toira hyphen Smith. I live at 408 East 8th Street. I'm in the Elston Grove neighborhood area, and this is in regard to the lighting issue that was passed on one of your prior or pending on one of your prior meetings. I understand we are moving to a lesser expensive, or in the long run, we hope, with the type of lighting that's moving into the area. Uh, in Elston Grove, when that lighting is put up in the mounts that we have for our overhead lighting, it's put up into like a little crown. It has no saucer around it or anything like that, and the LED lighting comes more straight down than it does outward by itself without a globe. So we had a meeting in our neighborhood, and a lot of you council members attended, and I thank you for that, and there's been a little bit of discussion, but really not much. Those of us that have gone out and looked have held our personal opinions, and I don't believe any of them have revealed them to you. But Elston Grove, as I stated at our meeting, is a unique animal in itself due to the fact that the buildings there are tall, they are two and three-story buildings, and in the other neighborhoods where the LED lighting has been put in, they're more of a cookie-type neighborhood to where they're all one-story or a attached garage with something like that, but very low. Elston Grove really needs lighting, and we have found, when I looked at the, was told to look at a couple of samples within Elston Grove, to where you have put the LED light up into this little crown, and also where you have put it up into the crown with the globe surrounding it, that I personally feel the availability of the globe surrounding the LED unit affords a slight amount more lighting to the area, and that it projects it out a little bit due to the fact that it's carried through prisms, okay? And so I would like to see globes put on those lights. Any questions? Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on any comments?
Hello, my name is Larry Silvestri, I live at 314 Kenwood Place. Uh, the issue of the globes is a environmental issue. Globes, like Jan described, they will shine light up into the third floor and also into the sky, which, uh, now, this is a strange issue to be decided by public comment or public vote. I wonder what decision would be made if the DDT insecticide were offered, you know, for Michigan City, or, you know, you're not chemists, or, no disrespect, you're not lighting engineers. The LED lights with no globes were decided by the Energy Systems Group, and partly it was based on the American Medical Association report from 2016 that light pollution is harmful to the environment and to human health. I would recommend that there be no globes, but it's kind of an odd way to decide, you know, by public comment or public vote. We're not qualified to make this decision. The Energy Systems Group made it, and I think you should respect their expertise. Thank you.
May I add additional comment, please, to this? I had attended another meeting that was represented by the mayor. It was an informational meeting given to us at the senior center where the mayor appears once a month, and I was informed by a representative of the mayor's that when the mayor had selected it for Elston Grove, he was thinking the globes should stay on. However, apparently the decision was turned over to you council members as to whether the globes would remain or be off. I ask all of you right now, do any of you live or reside in Elston Grove? I would feel that possibly taxpayers in Elston Grove would have a better opinion on the lighting issue in Elston Grove, and I do remember when the large redo on Elston Grove was completely redone over. The one thing that was decided that we needed lights in the event of any crime issues, because we, at that time, were plagued by a lot of crime issues. Right now, I would think the issue would be mute to you in many ways. We request more light, not that much light, it's very little more that you are going to get additionally by putting the globe on. It also would protect the LED unit that's up in there, because otherwise there's no protection. And I don't know why you decided we should not have additional lighting in any way, because LED has reduced our lighting a lot due to the size of the pole and the unit up in there with nothing around it to spawn it out to another area. So it's pretty direct, and it does not give us the additional lighting that we do need as people that live and pay to live and try and revive Elston Grove and bring it back to a quality of life neighborhood. I rest my case.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on any subject? Anyone else from the public wish to speak on any subject tonight? Public comment is closed, are there any comments from the council on any subjects? Oh, yeah, I was gonna get to that. Yeah. Are there any council comments? I would like to speak on the lighting issue and what, as the council president, what I'd like to do, or what we're gonna do, is put this on the agenda. This will be on the next agenda for the next council meeting so that folks that wanna come to the council chambers and talk about it are made aware of this in public. And not the council on a five to four vote by the public or however it was, you know, it's been settled and we've heard, we've heard many things and council members have participated in the workshop that we had with the Elston Grove neighborhood and I thought was very good. So the council members over there know a lot of the issues, but anyway, it'll be on the next council agenda and folks can come and talk and at that time, we're gonna make a final decision on which way we're gonna go with this so that Mark Wiss Electric can get on with the business of installing these lights with globes or no globes. Well, a couple of things that I'd like to weigh in on, and one of them is the article that came up in the News Dispatch on Saturday about Reeve Riley and the issue with the county and the county going after the five-year warranty on Reeve Riley's work that they've been doing because of NDOT's auditing of the La Porte asphalt plant where they have failed a number of audits from last year. So I inquired with the city attorney today, Amber LaPage, and I also called a couple county commissioners to see what effect that would have on Michigan City and to see if we could get a five-year warranty from Reeve Riley or if we would fall in that category. And the bottom line, it seems, is that if you're doing major road construction where you're getting into the bed of the roadway, that that would count towards a five-year warranty, but since Michigan City basically does milling and blacktopping, that it wouldn't fall into that category. Because the city engineer said that if you mill down two inches and there's cracks already in the subsurface, that once you put the new coating on top, that that like systematically, yeah, that crack comes back again, but, so that's where that's at, I just thought, you know, for general public's knowledge, that I thought that that was worthwhile. And then also with Craig Phillips and Don Babcock giving their presentation last, two weeks ago at the council meeting for the redevelopment commission, and I know that I brought up the playground equipment out of Washington Park and how it needs to be replaced because it's out of compliance and it's old and it's probably thirty or forty years old, and we seem to do other projects down there in the park and spend a lot of money, but, you know, when it comes to that, that's been put off to the wayside. So I'm still waiting for Craig Phillips, he said he was gonna talk to Mr. Cernak, the redevelopment commission attorney, to see if that would fall under the TIF district where they could pay for that. So I contacted Mr. Phillips's office, but I haven't got a response back, so I'm hoping by the next council meeting that somebody from the redevelopment commission will contact me and we can see where we can go with possibly getting that playground equipment replaced with TIF dollars rather than using Riverboat dollars in that direction. And also, just one more comment, I know that there was a lot of comments made about the smoking ban ordinance that we had, but I did check with the Long Beach Golf Course and I know Mr. Patrick said something that they do not, that they do allow smoking out there. So the next day, I double-checked with the course out there and they do allow smoking out there, there's never been a ban on smoking in Long Beach Golf Course, so I just wanted to make folks aware of that. And with that said, are there any other comments from the council? Having none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second by Councilman Fitzpatrick, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.